This is May 11, 2017, regular board meeting to order at 6:31 PM. Will I stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance?
I'm going to introduce our two community folks who are joining us today with our invocation. We'll be Reverend Charles Maybir. He is a native of Georgia ordained by the Diocese of Atlanta. He has served at St. Andrews Catholic Church in Roswell, the Cathedral of Christ the King in Atlanta, and he's currently serving as the pastor of Our Lady of the Mountains Catholic Church here in Jasper. Following him will be returning guests who we're glad to have back, Jim Breschek, who is from North Georgia Veterans American Legion Post 149. He has earned three Bronze Stars of Purple Heart and several unit citations, and he's also served as a school psychologist. So we're grateful to both of you for being here with us tonight. Thank you.
Let us pray. Almighty God, be with those gathered here in this meeting that the common good might be served with charity. We also beseech you to pour out your grace upon our schools so that knowledge of truth and understanding may be increased here among the families in Pickens County, and that our children may grow in righteousness and virtue. Bless all those who teach them, Lord, and bless those who learn. Keep them safe as they break for the summer. Bless their families. Let every citizen of our town and community be a child of the light and never stop learning. Grant that in humility of heart, we may ever look to you, who are the source and the fountain of all wisdom. We make our prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen. Father, Son, and Spirit.
Please join me.
At the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item will be the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Mrs. Lewis.
I'll second her.
Second by Ms. Finley. Any discussion? All in favor? Five. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Next item will be spotlight on student and employee achievement.
Tatum, who is the teacher of our social studies class in fifth grade, are very excited to announce the state winner for the fifth and sixth grades' Social Studies Fair. Charlie Gibbons at our school, he competed in the school, won our school. He competed in the district, and he was tied for first place. He went to regionals and qualified for state, and he won state. At state, he won Best in Fair for the class of fifth and sixth graders. He also won an award from the Friends of the Georgia Archives and History for his lottery ticket from the land grants, that he actually had an original. And then he won an award from the Georgia Council of Professional Archaeologists, which was that he had a copy of an original survey from the land grants. So there was a lot of things he had to do. I think he had to do an interview and present his project, and so we're very proud of Charlie.
Toler to come up and recognize Joseph Adams.
Thank you. All right, we are recognizing Mr. Joseph Adams from Pickens County Middle School for attending All-State Chorus this year. It's not an easy thing to do. There's a lot that goes into it. There are two auditions that he has to pass before he can actually attend the event. The first one, he has to prepare and memorize a song. He has to perform three scales, a major, minor, and chromatic scale for memory. He also has to sight read three examples. And what that means is they give him about four measures of music, and they say you have a minute, practice, and after a minute, they say sing it. And he has to sing it to the best of his abilities. And he did that for the first audition, passed it. Second audition, they sent him six pieces of music and said, learn this in about a month and a half, and then you're going to have another audition where you have to come. We're going to pick 10 random measures out of each of the pieces, and you have to sing it and prove to us that you learned it. He did that perfectly. He passed that one with flying colors. So he represented our school at All-State Chorus in Athens, Georgia, and out of thousands of students, actually from across the entire state, he performed with about 200 in the All-State Middle Mixed Chorus, and it was awesome. And he was not only the only student from our school to go, he was the only student from our county to go for All-State Chorus this year. And before I give him his certificate, I just want to brag on him just a little bit more. He's an awesome, he's one of our eighth graders. He was the lead in our spring musical, The Lion King Junior, this year. He also plays trumpet in our band at school, and he gigs outside with a band of other students from our school. So he's a very talented young man, and we will definitely miss him next year.
Joseph is awesome, and I have given thought to possibly not letting him go to the high school, just because we will miss him so much. At this time, I want to recognize Emma Long. Emma, if you'd come up. Dr. Pullen, why don't you come on up too? And you guys have seen Emma before. This time, we are recognizing her because she won the State FFA Talent Show. During the process, she performed five different songs, I believe, while the voting was actually taking place. Her final song of the competition was a song that she herself had written, and she's phenomenally talented, another one that I really am considering not letting the high school have. And Dr. Pullen has done an awesome job with our students. And again, I want to thank the board for providing us with the opportunity to have an ad teacher on campus, and I think Emma would support what I'm saying, that he has done a fabulous job.
Well, it is my honor, as the attendance officer for Pickens County School System, to stand before you to announce that we have two students that are seniors, will be graduating this year, who have 13 years of perfect attendance. And when I say, when you say wow, yes, that's wow. That is huge, and I can't tell you how much that it is an honor for me to stand here because I am all the time after parents and the kids, and I'm hounding them, you know, saying, you know, get them in school, get them in school, get them in school. Well, in this situation, these two, they found it very early that they had some competition because I think there's some patterns that run in the family, and so several of these were like, well, I'm going to outdo my mom, or I'm going to outdo my uncle, or... So there was some competition, but neither case. We have two very deserving students, and when I call out your name, I want you to come forward and receive your certificate, but I also want the parents to come as well because, parents, you have been the one that have stood behind them and have encouraged them to get up every morning, and a lot of days, I'm sure, when they did not feel well, and they said, oh, maybe I just, you know, no, 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 you don't understand, you're going to school. So when I call your name, if you'll please come forward, Sarah Aiken. And Ms. Sarah is here with her mom, Debbie, and her dad, Mike. Want to give you just a little bit of history. Sarah, if you and your parents will stand there for just a moment. We do have a certificate for you, but Sarah has already been accepted to a Valdosta State. She has artistic talent, I understand, and she is looking into interior design or maybe possibly art teacher. So Board of Education, look out, we may have an ex-art teacher coming along here. But we also want to acknowledge your 13 years of your perfect attendance. Sarah, we do have a certificate for you, but I do have Mr. Donnie Craig with the Sheriff's Department, who is our sheriff, for those of you that don't know it. Donnie Craig is here along with, is Dan Pooh here? Is Dan in the building? Okay. I have the privilege of being on the board, serving with the Sheriff's Foundation, and I have to say, Donnie Craig has really, he has done a lot for this community. He has given back so much, and I can't thank Donnie enough for what he does and what he does for this community and all of our families and agencies that he gives back to. But on behalf of the Sheriff's Foundation, Donnie's here tonight, and he has the honor of presenting to you, Sarah, a special award. So I'm going to turn it over to Sheriff Craig for just a moment.
Thank you, Shelley. Sarah, it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight to present you a Perfect Attendance Award, an amount of a scholarship for $1,000. And this is through our Sheriff's. I can't imagine how hard you've had to work to get to this point, to have 13 years of perfect attendance. I think it says a lot about our school system, says a lot about you, and especially your parents for hanging in there with you and keeping you going, but we just want you to know that we're proud of you, and it's an honor for us to be able to present this award to you tonight, and wish you luck in the future. So, thank you.
If we could get a group picture with everybody? Can we do, can we have the, I don't know how we can get everybody in the picture here? Congratulations. Congratulations. All right, our next two young men that we want to recognize is Jordan Burton. Jordan, if you would come forward with your parents, please. By the way, this is, if my math is right, this is 2,340 days and 16,380 hours. So that's a lot. All right, Jordan, we would like to present you, excuse me, wrong, present you with 13 Year Perfect Attendance Award, and we would like to, of course, recognize you and thank you for your 13 years of perfect attendance. It's my understanding, now Sheriff Craig, listen to this one very carefully now. Jordan is looking at enrolling in Reinhardt College Criminal Law. He's already involved in the fire department, has already went through a lot of the obstacle courses and things and working your way up, but he wants to be a state trooper. So we're very proud of you, and we thank you for your accomplishment. And parents, thank you guys so much. We appreciate you so much. And I'll turn it over, let Sheriff Craig do the honor again.
Day. And in addition to the activities planned for each school with the teachers, we decided on three common experiments or projects for our kids to do and turned it into a STEM Day competition. So we recorded the top scores for each school, compared those district-wide, to come up with our district winners. So I have the privilege of announcing the winners for the Georgia STEM Day competition for kindergarten and first grade. We have two winners, Louden Weber and Zach Williams from Jasper Elementary. And I apologize, Louden, for mispronouncing your name. For second and third grade, also from Jasper Elementary School, we have Santiago Rivera And our fourth and fifth grade competition winners from Tate Elementary, we have Aaron And, parents, if you would like, come on up here to the front so you can get a picture.
I'm going to invite Mr. Tim Basden up to do these honors for our CTSO winners.
My name is Tim Basden. I'm CTA Director for Pickens County Schools. I'd like to thank the Pickens County Board of Education for taking the time to recognize the accomplishments of our CTSO students, that's Career Technical Student Organizations. They competed this year against some of the best in the state and showed that not only can we compete, but we can go toe-to-toe with anybody. First of all, our TSA, which is the Technology Student Association. This first award that they received, I had not heard of it before, so I had to do a little research. The following students received Bronze and Silver Achievement Awards. The Technology Student Association Achievement Award is designed to motivate and recognize student members for high effort in a school's technology education program. The program is an opportunity for every TSA member to strive and receive recognition for accomplishments, designed to encourage excellence in the areas of leadership, development, understanding technology, school community service, and career and personal planning, and is planned so the highest awards acknowledge outstanding individual performance. Our students that received those awards were Emma DePuma, Olivia Fountain, Michael Jorgensen, Garrett Thompson, and Mary Zidoma.
Quarles, if you are here?
I'm right here.
Yep, you can come up and get in the picture as well. Quarles, you'll need to stay up there because we have several other ones for you.
They're coming back up.
Several of them are. In video game design, the following team placed third at the state competition and qualified to compete at Nationals in Orlando, Florida. Alex Pagel, Michael Jorgensen, Claire Sebel, and Mary Zidoma. As you can tell, several of them are staying up there because they won several awards. Okay, see if we can fit some more up there. In children's storytelling, the following team placed fourth and qualified to compete at Nationals. Olivia Fountain and Emma DePuma. And other top 10 finalists, outstanding student, Mary Zidoma. Music production, Kyle Combs. And photographic technology, Madeline Poole. Okay, for FFA, our FFA chapter had a great year as well. The students competed and represented Pickens at the highest level. The senior poultry team were first in region and placed second in the state. The junior team placed first in region and placed fifth in state. Taylor Dobson, Dakota Thomas, Courtney Dorden, and Terry Cochran. And several of you will need to stay up there as well. The junior livestock judging team, second in region and tied for third in the state. Okay, the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, the FCCLA, went to the state competition and did very well. Ashley Hamby placed second in baking and pastry out of 30 competitors. I don't know if she's here or not. Haley Harris placed second in creative garnishes showcase out of 19 competitors. In the star event, event planning, the following team placed fourth. J.C. FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, we had state plazers as well. Brittany Alexander placed 10th in healthcare administration. And Stephen Jordan placed 6th in healthcare administration, but also received the Community Service Award and will advance to Nationals in Anaheim, California. Skills USA. The following team competed in career pathway showcase, natural resources, agriculture, and foods, and placed first in the state and will compete at Nationals in Louisville, Kentucky. Andy Brownell and Ray McDonald. And Mr. Tatum, if you would come up and get your picture with them. Okay, our last area is for CTI, and I'm going to have our CTI Coordinator, Miss Kelly Flat, introduce those students.
Thanks, everybody. Unlike the rest of our CTAE department, I don't mind kind of putting myself out there so that we can brag on our kids. I think it's pretty common for our department as a whole to step back and let our students be in the limelight. We work really hard for them to be able to have those moments. But this is my first opportunity to speak on behalf of a large group of our students who placed at the state competition for CTI, which is Career and Technical Instruction. So I just wanted to kind of take a moment to speak briefly about how proud I am of them. So if you'll just indulge me for just a couple of minutes. Two and a half years ago, the CTI Coordinator position was left vacant, and we could have very easily just kind of walked away as only about 120 high schools in the entire state of over 400 high schools have a CTI program at their school. So it would have been very easy to kind of just let it fall by the wayside. But with the help of Dr. Goodman and our board, as well as Chris Wallace, who served as the CTA Director at the time, they gave me their blessing to continue on in this role along with Special Education Lead Teacher so that our students could have the same opportunities as everybody else to excel in the area of CTAE. And for that, I am very grateful. So thank you all very much. I made a lot of promises two and a half years ago to them. I hope that everything is working out according to plan, and we hope to get bigger and better as we move forward here at Pickens High School. So several of our students are not here tonight due to work obligations, but I wanted to acknowledge all of them. Joey Hollingshed is a junior at Pickens High School, and he placed third in the Level 2 woodworking division, and that's out of the entire state of competitors. We have over 450 students at the conference down at Rocky Gold Ranch, at the 4H Ranch. Mikhail Seiler, he placed... He placed first in Level 2 in construction technology. Jayden Shope, who I believe is working tonight, but her mom is here, so she can come up, as she played a huge advocacy role in Jayden's participation. She placed second in Level 2 in healthcare science technology. Dylan James, I'm not sure I didn't see him come in. Dylan placed third in culinary arts, Level 2, for professional foods. Travis Neighbors, Travis placed third in Level 2 technology skills. And Asia Payne, she placed second in Level 2 culinary arts for food event and table I also want to note that Asia also earned one of the four Outstanding Senior Scholarships that CTI Foundation gives out every year, so we're very proud of her for that as well. I also want to take a second, as I am clearly a jack-of-all-trades and master of none. Angela Quarles, Tommy Tatum, Sue Givens, and lovely Zidoma played huge roles in assisting these students in developing their try boards, their presentations, as well as their 10-page notebooks that displayed their entire process from beginning to end. We absolutely would not have been able to do it without any of them. So thank you all very much for that. I also want to thank specifically Anna Rainey, who I begged to come this evening. Please stand. She is my paraprofessional in the CTI Department with CTAE, and I think all of the CTAE teachers can say that she is an absolute... If we didn't have her, we would not exist. So she does everything that we ask her to do, and I'm very grateful for her as well. Thank you. The last award that PHS earned, and this is a community award, this is a teacher award, this is a student award. Children's Healthcare of Atlanta is the CTI Foundation that we support every year with fundraising. Pickens High School raised more money than any other high school in the state. $2,021 to be donated to Children's Healthcare of Atlanta's Marcus Autism Institute. We did that through cornhole boards that we made in construction class with Tommy Tatum. We auctioned those off. We have Jeans Day that our teachers fervently believe in and support every year. And 25% of all of that money goes to Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, as well as the button sales that we participate in with our ID classes, thanks to Dr. Goodman's purchasing of that equipment. So that is something for us really to be proud of as a community, for as small as we are, to raise more money than any other school system in the state. It's a pretty big deal, and I'm the most proud of that.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Beth Thompson. I'm the Director of School Nutrition, and I'm presenting the last student award tonight, which is very exciting for me. I work for the Department of Education, as we all do, and I work for the School Nutrition Program Division. And this year, the Department of School Nutrition, they conducted a student chef competition, a culinary competition. It was a statewide event, and we have two students from Pickens High School that I'd like to just tell you a little bit about. I don't believe either of the one of them are here. Dylan James, you heard his name earlier, he won another competition. And Dalton Lathery, are you here, Dalton? I didn't see him anywhere, so... But I want to tell you a little bit about this competition. This is the first time, and it's the first of many. When I found out about it in January, I went to Ms. Givens, and I said, "Hey, do you have some students you think would be interested in trying out for this competition?" And she says, "Sure, we can do that." So once I explained to her all the rules with the competition in terms of meeting the nutrition standards and not putting salt in the recipes, she was like, "I don't know if we can do that. That's not my style." But I said, "We can do this." So I gave her some seasoning recipes, some blends that, all different flavors, without any sodium. She took all of those, put them on a piece of paper, and put them into a hat, or a bucket, or a pot, and let teams of kids pick them out of the pot. And it just so happens that Dalton and Dylan picked ranch seasoning blend, and then they were challenged to come up with a recipe that met all the criteria. So it was my pleasure to work with them. We had to keep going back to the drawing board because they had too much chicken. Can only be two ounces of meat. We had to cut back on the sodium, so not full-fledged chicken base, but low-sodium chicken base. We needed more grain, so we needed to put rice in there, but we needed a whole grain because we had to meet those requirements. So I kept giving them all these hurdles that they had to keep coming forth, and I was really proud of them. They were true champions. And just two weeks ago, they competed in the competition in Macon, and they took second place, which is awesome. And in the state of Georgia, they'll be receiving additional awards for that. Their recipe will be featured on the Pickens High School menu next year, and will also be part of a collection in the recipe book as part of the Shake It Up initiative throughout the state of Georgia. So we will be doing it again next year. Sue's already committed to that, right? So it should be fun. But neither of them are here tonight, but I just wanted to let you know about it because it is my honor to be able to work with the students, and I hope to be doing a lot more. And there's a picture of them, they're not here. And so there they are. And one of them had a full beard the night before the contest, but he went and he shaved it. So he really got into character. I was really proud of him. Okay, now I'm going to switch gears and go to the big kids, but they're kids at heart. I have a couple staffs here, Tate Elementary and Pickens County Middle School. Will you ladies please stand up and come up and shake the hands? And as they're coming forward, let me let you know why we're celebrating them. And you may not recognize them if they're in your schools every day, they have hairnets on. And I'll tell you what, when they put their street clothes on, nobody can recognize them. So it's like they actually have hair and makeup and everything else. Our department recently had an administrative review, which is a federal audit that happens every three years, and commendations were given by the State Department of Education to both of these staffs for outstanding performance during their administrative review. The cafeteria teams impressed the state auditors with their professional mannerisms, their caring attitude towards students and staff, the attractive meals, which were well-prepared, and the great variety of menu options that were offered. My hat is off to all these ladies for the outstanding job they do in day in and day out feeding the students from their heart. Our school district was well-represented by these two cafeteria staffs. I'm so very proud of all of you. It's my pleasure to work with you every day, and I appreciate everything you do for the students and the staff at Tate and Pickens Middle School. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. And I have to tell you, too, these two schools, as it turned out, I didn't pick the schools, the state decided which schools they would go to, and they happened to pick two really fine schools, and these schools collectively feed over 80% of the kids every day. So that's a huge, huge task. So thank you. And grab your stuff, kids. Because you know you don't get them in the school.
It's my pleasure again to be here to introduce the National School Nurse Day. We had the honor of meeting with the Commissioner yesterday, and is he here, by the way, Commissioner Rob Jones? Wanted to make sure. Across the state, school nurses were recognized, and we had the honor of being there to... We have some pictures that we want for you to look at, but I don't want to steal any thunder away from Ms. Kimberly Parker. She's our lead nurse. Kimberly's going to go over just a few of the stats for you, but as she's doing that and talking about our school nurse program, we want you to enjoy the pictures of the last couple of days of activities that have took place. And I want to say thank you to all of our school nurses. We do have a couple that are in the back. We have Ms. Pat, who is Pickens County Middle School, our nurse, and Nurse Charlene. Charlene, if you'll wait. She's at Harmony Elementary School. I see Cory back there, says Charlene. So we just want to say how much we appreciate these ladies, because they work behind the scenes, not only to keep our children healthy, but they keep them in school. And when you hear these next numbers, you're going to see how much that these ladies do and how much that I appreciate what they do to help not only keep our kids healthy, but keep them in school. And parents, they help you guys be able to stay at work. So not have to leave your job, so that's another plus, too. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kimberly Parker.
Thank you, Shelley. So as Shelley said, my name is Kimberly Parker, and I'm the lead nurse for the school district, and I also work in the clinic at the high school. So I have been a nurse for about 18 years. Beginning in November, I took this role, and this has been an eye-opening experience for me to see what goes on in our school clinics and what these nurses are doing every single day to keep our kids safe and healthy. So many of you know, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. You may not know that this week, or I said last week, this week, the 6th through the 12th is also Nurses Week. And yesterday in particular was designated as School Nurse Appreciation Day. So it was a very special day for us, and as you see there in the picture, and as Shelley mentioned, Mr. Jones did sign a proclamation that really brought awareness and really talked about the specifics of what goes on in the school clinics and how valuable these nurses are and how sometimes they're not really recognized because they're not those nurses that are in the hospital and that you really think about. So I want to take just a few minutes and give you a couple numbers and hopefully give you a little snapshot of what some of these ladies are doing in our clinics. So we currently have over 4,300 students that are enrolled full-time in our school system. 1,444 of those students have documented chronic illnesses. Those are just the ones that are documented. So we know that there's more students than that that have chronic illnesses in our schools. This can range anything from allergies and asthma to severe cardiac illness, seizures, diabetes, and everything in between. These nurses are the ones that are on the front lines, that are taking care of these kids and making the environment a safe space for them to be able to come and participate in school activities, to get the medications that they need, to get the physician-prescribed treatments that they need, and to get the education that they need. And so this is huge. We love being able to take care of these kids in the school system and keep them around their friends and the environment that they belong. So some more numbers for you. We have, since January, we started gathering numbers of who was coming into our clinic, what were they coming in for, what kinds of things were we doing for them. So one of the numbers I want to tell you is that we have seen over 23,000 students in our clinics since January. Let me say it again, 23,000 visits in seven clinics since January. Okay, that averages out to about 300 visits a day of a school day since January that our nurses are seeing, okay? But here's another number for you. Because of the amazing work that these nurses are doing, assessment, evaluation, treatment, education with both the students and the families, only about 1,000 of these students have been sent home. Okay, that means 94% of the kids that are coming in to see our nurses are staying in school and completing the entire day.
Ms. Parker, where are you? What's the word?
Teamwork.
It is teamwork. So hopefully, like Shelley mentioned, we're able to keep, we're able to keep parents at work, we're able to keep kids in schools, which is going to make a difference in their academic standings, it's going to make a difference in test scores, makes a difference in what we have going on in our schools, their participation, all of those kinds of things. And we work very closely with our parents, with our teachers, with our administration so that we all are educated and we're all doing everything that we need to do in the classrooms, in the clinics, to take care of these kids. So again, yesterday, we did have the public proclamation on School Nurses Day. We appreciate the community. You can see there's a lot more people there than just our nurses. We had some of our administration come out, we had some of our community members come out. We work very closely with our community members, and we appreciate all of the support and the, just the resources that they provide for us to be able to do what we do. So we look forward to continuing to having a positive impact on the overall health and wellness of all of our kids and our staff members, because sometimes our staff find their way to their clinic, too. So we treat them as well, and we look forward to be able to continue to do that. Oh, wonderful. Okay, so apparently we're going to be of all the principals a copy. This is a copy of the proclamation. I'm not going to read all of it, because there's a lot to be said on here. So we will call up all of the principals to be able to do that. So if you guys want to come up.
And our two nurses, Ms. Pat and Charlene, please.
Hi. is kind of the continuation of talking about that community support and our community partnerships. And just recently, on April 12th, I had the privilege of accepting a donation from Piedmont Mountainside of a brand-new automatic external defibrillator, including all of the pads, as well as the case that allowed us to mount it on the wall. I believe there's a fabulous picture that goes along with this. Because that's not a nurse's scale, that's mine. So yeah, so this is the, this is the CEO, Denise Ray, of Piedmont Mountainside. And the big thing with this particular defibrillator, and why this was so important for the high school, is it's mounted in the lobby between the new gym and the new auditorium. And if any of you have participated in any events, or gone to anything at the high school, that is where you have been, the new auditorium or the new gym. This weekend, as I left today, there's a dance recital that's happening. There's another dance recital next weekend. There's been band concerts, chorus concerts, church programs. That's a very, very much-used space. As well as over the summer, there'll be numerous camps that will have both adults and children alike. And while we have AEDs that are located throughout the school, we did not have one that the public could readily see or access in that area. So because of this activity, and because of everything that we have going on in that side of the building, 12 months out of the year, seven days a week, this donation, this one donation from Piedmont Mountainside could truly be a life-saving donation. So we really are very, very grateful for all of the things that they do, which is a lot with us and the clinics. But this donation in particular could really make a difference in the lives of someone that's even sitting in this room right now. So we're very, very grateful to Piedmont Mountainside for the donation of this AED.
Well, good evening. I am the Director of Personnel for Pickens County, Rick Goble. A lot of you know me, so. But I had the distinct privilege of recognizing our most recent retirees, and just want to read something real quick that I came up with earlier. From the moment a student enters school to the time they graduate, preschool to graduation, all the way up to college. So one of the most important factors in their success is the educators and the staff that they come in contact with every day. So education is truly a team effort, and these retiring educators and staff have had a tremendous influence on the children and the young adults of Pickens County. So Henry Adams wrote, "A teacher affects eternity." They can never tell where their influence stops. And all of these retirees have changed more lives than we will ever know. So on behalf of Pickens County Board of Education, I would like to recognize the following retirees for their service. And I do have these alphabetized, so. Suzie Arundel. And Joe Wright. Bet Joe's doing some FFA things. So that's our retirees for this year, and I just have one, one thing I want to say to the retirees, let the recess begin. Thank you all.
Let me give a picture. Give us a picture.
We just have one more person that we'd like to thank as before this evening closes and some folks move out. We, as you all know, in December, or 1st of January, Dr. Perry resigned, and we had to choose an interim superintendent. And we had the privilege and the honor to be able to have Dr. Webb with us. And I'll try not to cry, but you know, this, in just the short amount of time that we got to know Dr. Webb, five months, he made a huge impact on not only us individually, but I think many employees within our system. And we just want to express our deepest thanks for him, and also let everyone know that this is a true embodiment of what a servant leader looks like, and we wish him well in his future endeavors, whether it be to go home, you know, back to the coast and enjoy the sitting with his wife, or up to his cabin. We just hope that he remembers us in his time, and that we really, and hope he knows that we really appreciate all that he's done. He didn't just come rubber stamp stuff, he moved us forward. He gave us an example to look up to for a long time, and we really appreciate you being here. As a new person on the board, he gave me lots of advice and helped me out a lot, and I learned a lot in just the small amount of time I had to opportunity to get to know you. So thank you for all that you've done for us. We have a small gift of our appreciation somewhere around.
You have to hold this far above it before it's going to rip.
I was hoping for a cupcake.
It's a nice handle holder for your cabin.
That's nice, yes. My wife will love that. It's heavy, too. This came from Marble City.
Tape.
Tape, come on.
Students went out and broke off a chip.
Whistle them out there, no recess.
Thank you very much. People that really deserve the recognition of sitting here, the principals, and the staff, and the parents, and the students. Got a great school system. It was very easy for me, and a real pleasure, a lot of getting to work with them. And I probably learned a lot more from them and you than y'all did from me. So thank you so much, and I hope if you're through Statesboro, give me a call. Linda and I have the phone book, and we'll go out and have a cup of coffee or lunch or something. And then when I'm back up here, I'll stop at a restaurant or something, and we'll have lunch up here, too. You've got a lot of nice places to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He also has a gift certificate to eat at the Woodbridge Inn. We were just making positive that he did come back and see us.
I can bring my whole family up here with that. Thank you so much. Very special. Thank you very much.
Next item will be the employment of a superintendent. At this time, I will make a motion to employ Dr. Carlton Wilson as the Pickens County School Superintendent, per the agreed-upon terms in the superintendent's contract. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Seconding by Mrs. White. Any discussion? All in favor? Three opposed? Two. Motion carries. Dr. Wilson, do you, do you have a statement? Would you like to speak at all?
I just want to thank you for the opportunity. I know that we have a tremendous school system, a lot of great talent, and it's just, I am honored with the opportunity to be a part of it again, and be a part of the direction that we're going in. And I'm just excited, and I can't wait until March 12th.
We look forward to working with you and seeing the system move forward, so. Next item will be the approval of a consent agenda. We have approval of surplus, approval of minutes, as listed, approval of Pickens County Middle School banned out-of-state field trip to Walt Disney World in Orlando. I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion by Mr. Long. Is your second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. White. Any discussion? Motion carries. Next item will be superintendent reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have some items we'd like to bring to the attention of the board. We'll start with our financial update, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Martha, just a moment to catch up, please. I'll present the general fund as of May 3rd. We have collected 83.41% of our budgeted revenue, and I always bring your attention to that top line. We're at 92.83% of our collection without the lower taxes. From May till the end of our collection period, which happens to be August, last year, we only collected about a little over half a million dollars. So I have some concerns that we will not collect this money fully. Do want to remind you that 2.5% of what we have to budget is a collection fee as retained by the county. So that's a little over half a million dollars. So we'll wait anxiously to see if we have some back taxes possibly coming in, or the collection of the rest of this year's taxes. We'll be in touch with the county just to see if there's anything we can do to help. We have expended 69.24% of our budgeted expenditures. We'll remind you there, too, don't get too excited. We still have four more payroll runs for most of our employees. Anyone who is not a 12-month employee, their payroll runs for four more months. It runs September to August typically, so don't get too excited. June, we have three payroll runs, and that's a lot of fun, and a few extra supplemental ones. Y'all have any questions on this report? Our SPOS update for the month of April, we received $368,619.65 in SPOS revenue. Yee-haw, that was really, really a great increase for us. And yes, I get to say yee-haw. Earned interest of $1,210.11. We had several expenditures for the month, most of, well, all of which had to do with some part of a technology initiative that y'all have previously approved. At the end of April, our balance, and this is SPOS 3 and 4, is $6,647,565.35. And we've only collected three months of SPOS 5, but just for your reference, you can see what we're looking like. So yes, that $368,000, they be very, very happy. Y'all have any questions about these three reports? And just to let everyone know, we've had three budget presentations so far. At this point, we had our first listening session for the public to have input into the budget. This is a new requirement for this year. We will have one additional one at our June, or prior to our June board meeting. Of course, the public is invited to attend. It is an opportunity for the public to just have some input into what goes into the budget. It's not really a question-and-answer session, but it's for us to hear the concerns from the public, or requests from the public. Department of Audits is running a little behind. We still have not had our exit, therefore y'all have not received your audit documents. I've got an email that said we should be setting the exit conference sometime in the next two or three weeks. As soon as... As soon as we have that, then it takes about six weeks, and you should receive your FY '16 audit documents via email or by paper, depending on what you requested. Y'all have any questions?
Ms. Smith, did I misunderstand? You said our condition, I find that the condition was yee-haw?
Yee-haw. It was yee-haw.
Dr. Wilson, I'm pleased to give you tomorrow your financial arrangement here in yee-haw.
That was a great.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I'm involved by Stacy Villal and the operations director.
This time of year, maintenance, we're just preparing for the summer work we've got coming up and trying to schedule everything, get it lined up. We've got a lot of things we want to do and accomplish this summer to make our schools a little safer, cleaner, nicer. I'll tell you one item that y'all approved last year that I do have in the works that we're fixing to do and start is you approved last year in the SPOLOST for me to spend some money at Hill City and Harmony to build a safety vest to come in. That is in the works. We will start that as soon as school's out. They may even start this week pulling some cables. So that will be completed by the time school comes back. So we'll have a nice safety vest in those two areas. But I didn't want you to think I forgot to do it. We were just waiting till the summer to get here. Transportation, we will be having a special training class on the white activity bus, and we've shortened it from five days to three so we could have a longer day. But we're doing it May 30th, 31st, and June 1st, and that's when students are out and teachers can, and coaches and all can stay a little longer. We kind of condensed this and shortened it up, and we're trying to... The state now requires us to do six hours of riding, loaded and unloaded. And the reason they did this, this wasn't a requisition when we bought the bus, but it has become an effect this year. So many people are buying them now. They're trying to up the training a little bit. So we're going to work with our people doing this. They can actually, we've got it set up where they can drive with their kids on the bus and be considered loaded. It's not a stop-to-stop bus, so I think we'll... We've talked with the state, and they're going to work with us, try to help us out a little bit on the training part. All pre-K centers been trained for the bus safety for next year. We had two technicians at the transportation department do some advanced training, ASE training in Delana this past week. I want to give you an update on the white fleet. We've been talking about for a few months during the budget process of buying some vehicles to replace worn-out vehicles in the fleet department. You'll see later on, Dr. Webb has a recommendation for you on three white fleet vehicles, their pickups, and for different variety of things in different departments. And we went out to all the dealers locally, price trucks. Got a great deal, got a great price. You'll see that. And I think you'll be pleased with those numbers as they come in. If you have any questions about it, we'll talk about it. You can ask me. I gave you a packet with each one on there. You can see what we have. Rests this month. Pickens High School had two criminal trespassings, two simple batteries, and two disordered conducts. Pickens Middle, we had one unruly juvenile, and they issued 10 citations for parent responsibility. Do have another award I want to recognize tonight, and we didn't bring the staff in to recognize them. I'm going to give it to the school tonight, and I want to go to the school, the principal tonight, and I want to go to the school tomorrow with a certificate for the people and have a picture made and put them in a paper and give them a little recognition. But this is the cleanest, the cleanest school award, the first one announced. And Dr. Webb has really been instrumental in this and helped me along with this. And I think it'll be an incentive to help them. ABM is willing to sponsor this for us. And the four people that won are from Jasper Elementary School. You've got this cleanest school award this time. And it is April Howlenbeck, Penny Beck, Robin Beatty, and Hannah Jiffy. And they'll each receive a $100 gift bonus from ABM for this work. So we hope to increase this as we go along. We'll do it next month, too, and then we'll stop over the summer, and as school starts back, we'll start back. So it'll be about a 10-month running thing. And I think it'll be a good thing. We can start, give them a little recognition, pat on the back, and they get a detailed list from an independent person that nobody knows who it is or when they're coming. They have no clue, except the principals. We email them the morning we're coming, just so no stranger's going to be walking around. And so I think it went pretty well. We went early in the morning. I let them go early in the morning. And then I said, "Now, pick your three or four that you think you're in the running, and go back at an odd time of the day and look again." And I walked through it, and it's pretty detailed. So Dr. Webb helped me with the list. I think it was pretty cohesive, and we just... It's going to work, I think, and I think it'll be a good bonus for each one of them. I think that's all I have, and we'll turn it over. The best, she's going to finish up her nutrition report for us.
Congratulations to you, Dr. Wild, and Jasper Elementary School for having the cleanest school last month. Do you have pictures of you cleaning? We're going to make some evidence on that. You can take that up with the new superintendent.
Good evening again. I just wanted to go ahead and just let you know what's coming up this summer for school nutrition. We're getting ready to start our summer meal program again. It'll be kicked off on May 30th, and we'll be doing the same four sites as last year, which was MEC. We'll do the night school. We'll give them meals. We'll do Boys and Girls Club, Park and Rec. And the high school will be providing meals for the football team and also for band later on in July when they have their camp. So, and again, as a reminder, the meal program is open to the public, so we will be advertising it on our website. It's open and it's free to any child between the age of 1 and 18 to receive the meals free of charge. So if you know of a family or an area that's in need, please send them to one of those locations. Probably next week, the state will have it updated on USDA, all the locations in Georgia where summer meals will be available, not just here in Pickens, but all over the state. You can just click on a town, and it will take you to the closest location for a family to go find the food. Okay? Because as we all know, some of these kids, the meals they get in school are the only ones that they have. And so it could be a long, long summer without the meals, so we're proud to do that. And then the other thing I wanted to just kind of speak to is everybody's probably seen the news about Sonny Perdue relaxes the USDA nutrition standards, which is a good thing. And I want people to understand that we're not going backwards. The standards that he's talking about, that he's relaxing, is the whole grain standard that 100% of the grains offered had to be whole grain. Well, we've been operating on a waiver for the last year and a half from the State Department of Education that 50% of our grains are whole grain. So we're going to continue on with that, and that enables us to serve the true southern biscuit instead of a whole-grain biscuit. The one benefit to Mr. Perdue relaxing the standards is for the sodium. We were set to go to the target to sodium level July 1 nationwide, and that was going to be a huge hurdle for all of us. And honestly, the good intentions behind all the meal standards were for the benefit of the kids and in their best interest. But unfortunately, some of those restrictions were so severe that it really did backfire, and it created kids not eating, participation going down, food waste, all sorts of things. So I'm glad that there's going to be some discussion and some regrouping, and our state department is going to support us and continue on with our whole-grain waiver and our sodium to leave it where it's at, and we'll go from there. So I just wanted to give you an update, because some people, skeptics, might think that we're going backwards and we're not interested in the nutrition of the kids anymore, and that could be further, no further from the tears. So I just make sure that you know that. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Would you like to address the prices? You know, since January, you brought nothing but good news to this board. And this, of course, is not necessarily good news, but it's something that is a requirement that we have to address.
Talking nickels and dimes here, so... But yes, Dr. Webb asked me to just kind of speak to and explain the rationale behind why I have to evaluate our meal prices every year for the paid student. So I just wanted to share a brief explanation behind that. In three words, it's paid lunch equity. This is a federal regulation by USDA, and it requires food service programs to gradually increase the paid lunch price so that it eventually will be at or above the difference in federal reimbursement received for a free eligible student meal and a full-priced student meal. So as you know, we get reimbursement back for every reimbursable meal we serve. A free student, we get a higher amount than for a full-paid student. And right now, the difference is $2.86. So each year, I have to plug in our numbers from October into a calculator tool, and it will tell me based on the Consumer Price Index how much we have to go up to meet that criteria. USDA, when this first started, was 2010, this paid lunch equity. And they've asked for us, over the 10-year, from 2010 to 2020, our goal was to try to get it to where our paid student meal price would meet that $2.86 threshold. So we have time, and we're just going up a little bit every year. Some districts might go up 25 cents at a time or 50 cents at a time. But for me, that would not be a good thing to do in this community. That could be, a 50 cent price increase could really devastate a family all at one time with two or three children. And of course, that would also backfire on our participation levels. So my recommendation for next year is we're able to meet the requirement by going up a nickel at elementary. So it'll be from $1.95 to even $2. So that should be an easy thing. Middle school will go from $2.20 to $2.25, and high school will go from $2.20 to $2.30. And this is also something new that I'm proposing, is that I've... My recommendation is that the middle school price and the high school price not be the same. High school students actually are offered more food. They have larger portions. And the plate cost, the amount of money that we're spending on food at the high school is significantly higher than the middle school. They also have higher calorie requirements in terms of the meal pattern that we need to meet. So it didn't make sense to continue keeping middle and high school the same. And my goal is at each level, elementary, middle, and high, is to introduce different products so that there's a stepping stone for, you know, higher-quality whole-muscle meats, you know, larger portions and such as the kids get older. So any questions on that?
There will be no increase in breakfast.
Right. Breakfast will stay the same. Adults will stay the same. And we're right in line. We're really still middle of the pack with the counties that surround us, probably 10 to 12 counties in our area. We're not the highest. We're not the lowest. So we're right in the middle. Okay?
I'd just like to say thank you. I'm not sure if people are aware of all the hurdles that you guys have to jump through. And one of our questions in the budget session is, you know, there's people that aren't aware that you're separately funded. You self-fund your whole department. You know, it's not a piece of the school budget. And I think it's just amazing what you guys do.
We just take up space. And we thank you for that. So it's our goal is to stay in the black so we don't have to come to the general fund asking for help. So that is our goal. And, but, Dami's in the audience. She's my right-hand bookkeeper. I recognized her at the last board meeting because she also received accolades from the State Department for her organizations, and she's my queen behind all the free reduce. And so without her, you know, we'd be something. But we have, we're very highly regulated, and so we take it serious. So thank you.
Thank you for all you've done.
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, and Mr. Chairman. Later in the agenda, I'll be asking for the board to approve these increases, which align us as the minimum that we can choose to do with the plan that is underway as required by the federal government. Next is Ms. Cantrell with a couple of items for us, starting with attendance.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Members of the board. Want to, first of all, let's look at the dropout report. If you look at our ending dropout report, we have a total of eight. We do have one young lady who we are working to enroll in, probably the Mountain Education Charter High School. So we're hoping we can drop this number to seven. If I went back and reviewed numbers from last year, I think we were right around 15. So to say we're at eight now, keeping our fingers crossed. We have 10 days at school. I can't thank everybody. It's not just one single person, but it takes teamwork. It takes a village to do what we're able to do, and I just want to thank everybody for your part, everything that you do, because it does. It takes everyone. Dr. Flat, thank you so much for the time that I've been able to work with you. He so graciously has stepped up to the plate, and he has done a tremendous job, and I want to thank him for what he's been able to accomplish in helping us keep this dropout rate to the level it's at. So thank you, sir. And now I want to talk about the attendance. I want to encourage the principals for the next 10 days to try to keep students from leaving your buildings. I know that's a huge... We'll do the monthly attendance award. I want to congratulate Mr. Corey Thompson, Harmony Elementary School, for the highest attendance award. This is a great honor for Mr. Thompson and Harmony Elementary School, 96.61%. If you will take this back, sir, and you please announce that. And Mr. David Wild, if you'll please come up and give that banner away.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to note how close this one is.
One of the things while they're figuring out how to enroll the banner, and it's going to take them a little while. When I was talking about the principals, asking them to try to keep the students from leaving your building, looking at the numbers from last year to this year, our schools were looking at an average of 6% to 10% decrease in our six or more absences. So if we can hold that for the next 10 days, we're really looking great as far as attendance. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed. Schools, principals, everybody, again, thank you. Thank you so much. Everybody works so hard, and I just can't thank everybody for all that they do. So again, thank you to everyone. And then I think the next... Yes, staff attendance. Thank you, Ms. Martha, for keeping me straight. Jasper Middle School, Anita Walker. Anita, I don't know what you're doing, but you're on a roll. Congratulations. I think 97.54%, if I'm looking at that correctly. Good bribes. So congratulations. Go back and celebrate with your staff. I think I'm going to stay here because I think I'm next on the...
Yes, please continue.
Next on the agenda, it is my honor to give to you tonight the draft copy of the Student Code of Conduct. I have each one of you a copy that I will be... If I could ask someone if you could please assist me, Mr. Goble? You have your names, and this is your second activity book with your red pen, so you can go home and make all the red marks that you want to. I would like to just bring your attention to several, kind of the big items that kind of stand out as far as the changes. If you're looking on page 3, and I made notation of this, you have it inside your folder. Pickens County truancy ordinance has changed slightly. We've added a section there where parents are... With parents that enroll their students, there's a 30-day provisional that they have to get documents to us. If that 30-day provisional, once that timeframe lapses, if we have not received that information, then it is our duty to let the parents know upfront that, you know, we will continuously call them and remind them. But after the 30 days, then there is a provision there where a parent can be cited for not providing that documentation to the school within the provisional time limit. So that's just an extra provision that the truancy ordinance has adopted, and that, of course, will be approved through the commissar's ordinance at their board meeting. meeting. Also wanted to, we put in there the updated school attendance policy, which is on page four. Of course, that will be something that you would have to do the final vote as far as tonight for that to go in. The acknowledgement consent form, we've changed that slightly. We've removed the opt-out checkbox for the sex education, but acknowledge that the parents have, will get a letter, a separate letter where they acknowledge that they, whether they want their student to participate or not. And you do have a copy of the letters where they can opt in or opt out. So you can read that letter. The reasoning is a letter sent home to the students explaining the sex education course and allows the parents to have their child to opt out of the course. This is the form that the schools rely on for the student participation. And then, of course, the, I have a notation here that the final approval would be at the June 15th Board of Education meeting. And if you'll notice on the front cover, I don't know if you all remember, but the, this is our Teacher of the Year representatives. And we do have some more clip artwork that we're going to do to the front cover. But I do want to extend a great deal of appreciation to Beth Moore. Beth has an eye for working and with publications and booklets of this type, and I would not be able to do this by myself. I would just be honest with you. This is a huge task. And unless you have been behind the scenes and you've been involved with it, it takes a lot of time. So I want to thank Beth Moore for all that she did to help bring this book again to life. She helped us in the endeavor last year, and I want to send my appreciations to her again. You do have time to look, again, look at this booklet, to make any corrections, add anything. So please, take your time and call me if you have any questions. And, but I would like to have your booklet back, one way or the other, so that I know that you, you know, that everybody, I checked you off, just so that we could say that everything's good to go.
What's your date?
Well, I would like to have it back within the next couple of weeks, if you could, because we're looking at June 15th board meeting for the final approval. And then, once we get it to the printer, they can, turnaround time is about a couple of weeks. So.
Ms. Cantrell, if I may, to our esteemed members of the media, of course, these documents are available to you, but these are working documents. So if you could be patient with us until it's finalized, we're anxious to get comments from our board members. And I think we've got most of the comments from our school level and our staff now. So we're going through that progress. If you'd like to have a copy, we'd be glad to give you one, or you can wait until we have the final product. Any other questions?
Now we're going to talk about tobacco-free. Dr. Webb had sent some information out about mid-April, and he'd asked Nurse Parker and I to look at it. And when we were looking at the actual, from the Department of Public Health, I think it was like 120 schools that were in the tobacco-free zone. And he, his question to us was, are we one of the 120? Are we in that number? So when we went back and we looked, yes, we are. Back in 2012, we actually were brought in under that umbrella. Since then, there has been some things, a lot of changes that have took in place. So we are a little behind as far as where we need to be, as far as making it a tobacco-free all the way around. And when I say that, is there steps in order to get there. So it's going to take us a little while for us to get to that point. But Nurse Parker is here, and one of the things is we're asking for the tobacco policy to be revision made. And you have a copy of that. That would be to include the e-cigarettes. And then, the, there's a part in there where you see where the strikeout information. So that's a revision that we're going to be asking for tonight. But I'm going to let Nurse Parker kind of go into some of the updates and recommendations because this is something that the nurses feel very strongly about, and they want to try to help with the education part of this. We also want to try to help with, another good point is that, to help these people who have this addiction problem and who need help to get off of it. So, you know, not only are we saying tobacco-free, but we want to be able to offer some of that help to help these people that have this problem. So I'm going to turn it over to the expert here, who knows all about nursing. So Nurse Parker?
So like Shelly said, we did determine that we joined this movement, which is sponsored by the Department of Public Health and the Department of Education, back in April of 2012. And one of the big changes that we've seen happen over the last five years is the increased use of e-cigarettes. There, you see a lot more vape shops, those kinds of things. You see them here in Pickens County, but they're everywhere. They're very, very popular with teenagers. And there's actually not a lot of education to the risks and the dangers of using e-cigarettes versus the regular cigarettes that we've been talking about for years. So that's why one of the big changes that the state is recommending, that we also recommend today, is the inclusion of a specifically saying, you know, no tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, and really bringing that out so we can bring that to light and start doing some education on that. We do currently have signs posted at all the schools and all of the athletic facilities that very clearly state that we are tobacco-free. So we're good on all of that. We do currently have policies for staff and students. We recommend those updates, and I'll talk specifically about that in a second. And those policies, again, are related to, the changes in those policies are, again, related to the e-cigarettes. So the board policy, GAN, is the one that we have made the recommendation for, to include So the change here is the strikeout in the second paragraph, as well as the highlighted part, that no visitor, staff member, school member is permitted to use any tobacco products, including e-cigarettes. We also recommend that we update the links on the board policy webpage so that the federal references actually connects. These are just kind of some cleanup things. That we update the code of conduct, which was just presented, to include e-cigarettes in the new version, to make sure that all of that matches, as well as in staff handbooks and student handbooks, so that it's very clearly stated with the same verbiage across the board for everyone. The other recommendations that we make are more for the administration of each of the schools. This is to add a link to the webpages for the tobacco-free statement and linking to the policy. So again, it's kind of connecting all of those pieces together for everyone to see wherever they go. To standardize the announcements to be made at all sporting events and other activities. We actually do really well at most of our sporting events, but we want to make sure that we're doing as well when we're talking about events that are inside. So our choral concerts, our band concerts, our drama performances, things like that, we want to be making those announcements there as well. We also recommend that the middle school and the high school particularly designate a bulletin board at some visible point in the school so that we can post resources on, for example, what these cigarettes are and what the dangers are, but also on resources, helplines, websites they can go to, where they can get for information for those, knowing that we have family members and staff members who may need those resources to help them to quit. We want to make sure that all of that is visible, particularly in our middle schools and high schools. And then to include tobacco-free policy and the conversation about the tobacco-free policy in at least two staff meetings for every school. So we would recommend that they bring up this tobacco-free policy and review that with all staff members at the beginning of each semester. As just kind of the reminder and making sure that it's something that we continue to talk about and not forget about because it is still an important issue. So those are our recommendations to kind of get us up to speed of where we need to be after five years so that we stay current with our tobacco-free policy.
Any questions? You'll notice under action items, we have that listed as a first read for your action on June 15th. Thank you, Nurse Parker. Ms. Cantrell. Next, it's been a good night for awards, and we haven't yet enough. Ms. Wallace?
Good evening. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing Hill City Elementary as the 2017 Title I Rewards School for High Progress. This distinction was given based on data from 2013 to 2015. In the letter sent by our state superintendent, he states that you have focused on student excellence and building strong communities. And having been at Hill City many times, I definitely have to agree with him. I would think he had actually been out there. He goes on to say, "I know that you and your staff will not be satisfied until every student is succeeding at the highest level in all areas." And I agree with him with that statement also. "We appreciate that what you and your staff have done to provide your students with a quality educational experience. Thank you for the hard work and teachable moments. Congratulations." So Ms. Howko, if you and Mr. Wallace will come up, I would like for you guys to hold your banner, and we'll get a picture of that. Yeah.
Congratulations, Hill City Elementary School.
Absolutely.
And Ms. Wallace, next up?
All right. After reviewing the GSBA promotion and retention policy with the principals in March, I'm requesting a simplification of our current promotion and retention policy so that it's the same for all grade levels, and that it looks basically at the totality of evidence using a variety of assessments. So a copy of this proposed policy will be available for a 30-day review, and we're asking that, at the June regular board meeting, that we look at changing this policy.
Thank you. List a number of items, and of course, you can see there, we're trying to move away from tests being the predominant reason that a child would be promoted. So I think this policy is in line with what I've heard you speak about, and our principals are in agreement, support of it, and for this community as well. Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
Do you guys have any questions? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Shea will give us a technology report, and I would be remiss if I did not ask Ms. Seeger to consider adding to the record how sharp Mr. Shea looks tonight, suit, and coat, and shirt.
I want to point out the green. Some of you know what that means. Thank you very much. Board members, I'm coming tonight to you to ask, coming tonight to ask for some splosh expenditures. As we came to you in the fall with the Prometheum Board Initiative, that's gone over really well. It was well-received, the schools and the administrators and the teachers have responded extremely well to it. And what I'm coming to do tonight is to ask you to allow me to complete that project, freeing up those splosh funds to purchase the remaining boards needed to outfit K through 12. We can do this with additional 80 boards and finish up that project. As we go into the summer, we don't have to worry about jockeying those. Last time we did it, we squeezed it into a two-week period here in the boardroom and worked extremely hard. As we go into the summer, we'll have a little bit more time to spread that out and not hurt ourselves as badly as we did before. No. So that's one of the objects, or one of the things I'm asking you for. Another expenditure I'm asking for is to replace our content in our firewall filters. A few years ago, prior to my coming here, the county went with a product that was good at the time and filled our needs. Since that time, we've had a couple of ups and downs with the service that is provided. Whenever there's slowness of the internet, we get blamed for everything, regardless of whether or not it's happening here or across the country or just within our building. But as we add all of the Chromebooks that we've added in the last, you know, 12 months, and we're not just focusing on student going into a lab or those five machines in a classroom, now we're putting machines in every child's hands, which increases the traffic tremendously. Okay? So it's time to upgrade that filtering process so that we can provide the safety needed in, you know, that we're tasked with to those students. The product is Check Point, but with that comes additional servers and expenditures on top of that. This also allows us to look at the future as we continue down this one-to-one path. Eventually, we're going to have to have a conversation of whether or not we allow these machines to leave our buildings. And if we allow these machines to leave our buildings, we're still tasked with keeping them safe and enforcing our policies outside of our walls. Right now, if a machine leaves our campus and they connect to their home network, we have no control over what that computer's being used for, which kind of scares me from a parent point of view, but also from a technology director point of view when I'm tasked with keeping that safe. So with this product comes a cloud version, and we can enforce our policies wherever that machine goes. And that goes from a student machine all the way to a teacher laptop. If it's a Pickens County-issued device, we can guarantee its policy enforcement wherever it may be. So to me, that's important, and I would hope that, you know, you see that the same way. And then the third initiative I'm coming to you with is with the building of the cafeteria at Tate and the sound system and the projector and now that it's working without a hitch and people are enjoying it, some other principals have come to me and questioned the possibility of putting projectors and sound in their cafeterias and some of their gymnasiums for large PTA gatherings, for school assemblies and that kind of thing. So the third item on the list would be projectors in cafeterias that need them, as well as some of the gymnasiums that need them. The, you know, the high school has two performing arts centers, you know, they don't need to use their gymnasium for that. The elementary schools, you know, when it's a PTA meeting, their choices are to scream at the teacher or, you know, at the parents. Even in some of their staff meetings, they don't have that way to project their voice as well. So I'm coming to ask you for that as well. So those are the three projects that will fill out my summer as we continue down this road to make Pickens County one of the best in the area. So any questions about those three initiatives or the money that I'm asking for, or how it's going to be used, or who's going to benefit from it, or how can I answer your questions?
These are splosh four funds for the most part, right?
Yes, they are. I'm not touching five.
Later in the agenda, I'll ask for your approval of your self-claim.
No questions? If you ever do, just pick up the phone, call me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Very thorough. During the retreat, board retreat in February, you had several questions about graduation. And so I've asked Dr. Flat if he would bring you up to date and brief you on the upcoming graduations at Pickens High School.
Hey, if you have any questions, just stop me as I'm going, but I'll try to run through pretty briefly everything we've got outlined from here. First of all, I want to thank you all for your support in getting everything done for graduation. And the Sheriff's Department, I mean, I can't tell you how helpful they are with that whole endeavor and putting it all on what they do. And Stacy and Sheri at Transportation have met with us multiple times to make sure everything's ready to go. So they have been awesome. And the Fire Department and the off-duty EMTs that will be there to help out. So really, really... really going well so far. All right, so we're going to have the event, obviously it'll be on May 27th at 9:00 a.m. in the stadium. We're going to fry the shuttle service as we did last year. The service will, the buses will be at PCMS as well as Chattahoochee Tech. They will begin boarding at 7:40 a.m., and they will depart at 8:10 a.m. And at each location, that's four full-size buses, as well as one special needs bus for anyone that might need a lift assistance or anything like that to get there. Those buses will not make a return trip because we do not have time to get them over at 8:10, drop everyone off, and then come back out of traffic and get back before the start. It just, it won't happen. We did that last year with one bus, Stacy, and it still didn't get there in time. We can't run the multiple trips like that. It just won't work out time-wise. Parking, we'll have a handicap row right at the front. If you've all been to the stadium before, the row that's nearest to the stadium down there, we'll have that all combed off as usual and blacked off for handicap parking. We also do handicap parking at the fieldhouse as well. If there is someone that gets there that needs assistance, the sheriff's department as well as the carts that we get from the other entities will be there moving throughout the parking lot. So anybody that needs assistance getting down to the actual stadium, that will be available. They'll be roaming, oops, sorry about that, they'll be roaming the entire time, and they will pick up and go from there. So we shouldn't have any issues, and if anybody needs anything, as soon as they see someone in the parking lot helping out with the explorers or anything, we'll get somebody over there to them. So that should not be an issue, hopefully. I'm trying to miss anything. Heat issues. There will be EMTs, we'll have an ambulance there on hand. We will be selling water in the concession stand along with other things, but a lot of water has already been purchased. I talked to Ms. Gibbons about that, and she's ready to go on that, so we will have that available as well. The new PAC is going to be open from the outset of the ceremony. And in the paper, we're running ads starting next week that anybody that wishes to come and go directly there may do that. So if we have anyone with heat-related issues, elderly people that want to come, but they actually want to be there, we're going to stream ETC directly in there so they can see it. And that's always been a backup plan for rain issues, but now we're just going to put it out there that they can go straight there if they want to, to view it. So that is also an option, and we will have that manned with teachers and everything, so no issue should be there. Rain plans. And the first thing I'm going to say was you're going to pray for clear skies, is what we're praying for, but Mr. Colberth and I are working on a very detailed plan in case there was an issue. I will say, if the forecast is gloomy, then we'll execute the plan from the start. We would prefer not to bring people in during the middle of something, if at all possible. So, but our rain plans involve the new gym, and each student graduating gets six tickets. We do have the ability to then take people in the new PAC as well as the old PAC and the cafeteria, just like Mr. Shea was talking about with the projector. We will stream the content in there so people can see it. And we will have people manning all doors because by fire code, we can't put any more than about six tickets in each student's hand. We can't get them in there. We will probably be able to accommodate 95% of what would show up. Roughly, we anticipate we get about 4,000 at graduation. We can house pretty safely in those three areas. We'd be around 3,300 if we know it's going to be inside. Some people won't come already, so we feel pretty good that we can handle it if it comes to that. We would just try to make the decision of how we're going to do that well beforehand and not chance it. So remember, we're praying for clear skies. That's much, much easier and much more well-done usually. And we're very excited just to see another group of students become alumni as well as citizens and move on. Do you have any questions? Okay, let me know if you all do, and we can talk about anything. So we're working on that, and hopefully we'll be ready to go very soon. We've got to wrap up those final plans, and we'll be good.
Okay.
Well, Dr. Flatt, we very much appreciate all that you and your staff are doing to accommodate the families and the citizens that would like to attend.
Yes, sir.
The issue about the Saturday morning and the heat is universal throughout the state, but I think the plans that you have in place there would give some suitable alternatives. The only ones that the board may want to consider in the future is changing the time, and you have to balance that. In the evening, it might be cooler or might not, but I do know that this is an issue within the community, as you do as well, that concerns a lot of people with the heat. So until we get a dome, air-conditioned dome, I'm not sure how many years it would take for these SPOLOST to make it that, but thank you very much.
I figured Coach Parker had hit a teamwork on that with that dome idea.
I noticed his ears pricked up in the back when I mentioned that, but don't hold your breath.
Just settle for a trip to the dome in the fall.
There's an idea, there's an idea. Thank you very much, Dr. Flatt.
And I was reminded by all of them, you all know to be there, correct? The Sharman's gotten ahold of you all, hasn't he? Okay, perfect, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As I conclude my report, Mr. Chairman, I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to personally thank your school board chair and your school board attorney, who has been such a help to me entering. When you come into a community and you're not really sure of the issues involved, you really have to depend on someone that you can go to. And Mr. Landrum has not only been a great source of legal counsel for me, as you know, to the whole board, but he's been very helpful to me in understanding this community better. So, Mr. Landrum, I say thank you very much and for your assistance and your dedication to this board and this community.
Thank you very much. I'm honored to serve you.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I conclude my reports.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Next will be action items. First one being the school lunch price increase. Do I hear a motion to approve the school lunch price increase as presented?
I make a motion to approve the school lunch prices as presented.
Motion. Motion by Mrs. Lewis, seconded by Mrs. Mr. Long, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor? Five. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Next would be the fleet vehicle purchase as recommended. Do I hear a motion to approve the fleet vehicle purchase as recommended?
I make a motion to approve the fleet vehicle as presented.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. White, seconded by Ms. Finley. Any discussion? All in favor? Five. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, technology request. I hear a motion to approve the technology request as presented.
I make a motion that we approve the technology request as presented.
Motion by Mr. Long.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. White. All in favor? Five. Any opposed? None. Next will be the approval of the revision of Policy AD, which is the school attendance areas that was put out for public review at the April regular meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the revision?
I make a motion to approve the revision.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Finley, seconded by Mr. Long. Any discussion?
I guess Shelly did address that.
It was a little unclear, as I may, Mr. Chairman. It was a little unclear whether it was a question or a comment, but it did ask Ms. Cantrell to respond to it, which she did. We haven't had a follow-up phone call or anything, my knowledge. Was there anything additional, Ms. Cantrell, that you received on that?
No, sir.
Ms. Seagres? So hopefully it was satisfactory answer.
Thanks for bringing that up.
We don't get a lot of comments on this stuff. I saw that open, and I was like, oh, wow. Somebody actually looked at this stuff.
Is there any other discussion? All good there? All in favor? Five. Any opposed? None. Next, I will make a motion to put the revision to Policy GAN, Tobacco-Free Zone, schools out for public review until the June 15th regular board meeting. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. White. Any discussion? All in favor? Five. Any opposed? None. Next will be the revision of the Policy IHE, Promotion and Retention. Do I hear a motion to put the revision to Policy IHE, Promotion and Retention, out for public review until the June 15th regular board meeting?
I make a motion to approve the revision of Policy IHE for Promotion and Retention for public review until the June 15th meeting.
Motion by Mrs. White. Seconded by Mr. Long. Any discussion? All in favor? Five. Any opposed? None. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the board's action to approve those items.
I will make a move that we go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent, and to consult and meet with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the school district or an officer or employee, or in which the officer or employee may be directly involved. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Finley. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. And I wanted to invite Dr. Wilson to sit in with us tonight. Okay, at 9:05 p.m., a motion was made by Mrs. Lewis, seconded by Mrs. White, to come out of executive session. No action was taken. Do I hear a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read?
I make a motion we approve the executive session minutes as read.
Motion by Mrs. Lewis.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Finley. Any discussion? All in favor? Five. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Next item will be approval of personnel.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board approve the PAR as presented.
I will make a motion to approve the PAR as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Any discussion? All in favor? Five. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Next item is board comments.
I'd like to say thank you again to Dr. Webb. Try not to spin the tires too much getting out of town tomorrow. Any of y'all that are on the roads tomorrow, just clear the way because he's going to be out here.
Not true, not true. I'm not leaving until Saturday morning, I can't. And it may be kind of interesting not to go through a Friday in which I over there called Dr. Flatt. Make sure you get Dr. Wilson's phone number.
About 3:00 o'clock usually. I appreciate Friday.
As I've said before, it's been an honor and a privilege, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to serve this community and to be of service to you and the school system.
We appreciate you, we appreciate it. You're a friend of Pickens County, we appreciate it. Any other comments? Next item is to adjourn.
I like that motion.
Motion by Mr. Long. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. White. Any discussion? All in favor? Five. Any opposed? None. We are adjourned.